Members present Bella Gorman, Christine Trident Fahey, Darren Rose, Dwayne Stanley. He's did, is he here? I didn't see his name. Nope, sorry.
Dwayne?
Nope. Okay. Evan Brusowski, Greg Theos, James Carter, and Maura Webster.
Excellent. Thank you. So at this time, I did get one note or Dwayne got one note that he forwarded to me for public comment. Is there anybody else on the line for public comments?
Maura, this would also be a good time to announce about the executive session.
Ah, thank you, Sarah. The board is planning to go into executive session at the end of open session to discuss strategies regarding negotiations with represented personnel. And in doing so, as doing so, an open session would be detrimental to the process. The board will not reconvene tonight in open session afterward.
And Maura, I created the link and it should be, I invited everybody, so it should pop up in your email.
Oh, great ones.
Thank you, Lisa.
And at the end of this meeting, when we adjourn into executive, if anybody has not received that link, just let us know and we'll make sure we send it over. So for public comment, I'm going to share the one that Dwayne did receive. I'm just going to pull it up here real quick. The email says, "Hi, Dwayne, I am a parent and my kid attends AMSA, and I am worried about the decreasing quality of education and outcome of placement of high school students into top 30 colleges over the last few years. So I want to find out what steps are being taken by the board to improve the situation and measure the success." And they also made note that a couple of parents had shared similar sentiments. That is from Rahul Shah. And so I think, thank you first of all for public comment, for submitting your concerns to Dwayne. It's really important that people do voice their questions and concerns, so we love that. And I know, Dr. Mobley, in your entry report that you did for us, you expressed that you had found, you had found this, that parents were feeling that way. And overall, and I know that you've done some work on that, and I know that we're sharing numbers and we're always kind of keeping up to date with scores and college acceptances and who applies and all of those numbers. So I don't know if you want to make a comment now, but maybe we can look at putting something together for the next board meeting and report out.
Perfect. I think that's great. So a couple of things. Yeah, so in my entry plan, some thoughts from some of the parents, not all of the parents, but some of the parents were that top-tiered colleges don't recognize AMSA students for being the quality of student that they are. And a few students at the end of the year really expressed disappointment in not getting into their first choice. So they were wondering the same thing. So I think, you know, doing a little bit of a data dive on this, letting me, giving me the month to look at our data, and I'll come back to the board in September, and I'll share with you what I find. You know, what are the top-tier colleges kids are getting into? How frequently are they getting into? What I don't, I know I don't have data on where kids were rejected because we just don't collect that. We collect data on the acceptances and then where they choose to go. So I will present that. I'll reach out to Mr. Shah just to do a deeper dive into what he sees or means by decreasing quality of education. And then my October executive director report is around our scores. How are we doing? And the one that I did last year doesn't lead me to believe that we're decreasing quality of education in any way. But, you know, I'll learn from him what he's thinking and what he's feeling and see if I can get a better understanding of his question. And then I'll report back out at that September board meeting.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment as well, just as an observation? A lot has changed since COVID and the top-tier schools have during that time and even afterwards have maybe changed the way they look at applications. So I guess that's something also to consider while we're thinking through this. It does also sound like these top-tier schools are like maybe reverting back to how they consider applications like pre-COVID. So it's just been constantly changing these past three or four years.
Yeah, well, we'll do a deeper dive into that. And I had started the conversation just very, very minimally with a couple of faculty members last year about what AMSA considers like to get the highest quality grade point from the GPA weighting. And the fact that I think some of AMSA's basic courses are not basic when you compare those basic courses to courses you see in a traditional district public school. In particular, you know, our sending districts. So we need to kind of explore this idea with, well, I need to explore it with a wider range of faculty. And I, you know, I planned on doing that with Mr. Naraki, just to get their feeling. You know, they very much protect what they do, rightfully so. And they don't, they don't want to inflate anything, but they may be underselling themselves in the quality of education that they're delivering. Because it really, really, when you talk to the alumni coming back, those kids feel ready. So that I can say, the kids feel ready when they come back and they talk to us.
May I make a comment just about logistics? This is just about logistics. Public comment is, you can always answer, and you can. But in all fairness to the board, public comment is that it's supposed to be a comment, and it gives the board an opportunity to respond and have time to respond. Because, you know, you had a wonderful answer, but I'm just saying that you don't always have to have an answer for the comment.
Yeah, and our answer will probably come a little bit in September.
Right.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda items. The construction budget information and then the June financial statements were all in there, and everybody should have had a chance to look at them. Any questions or clarifications that anybody wants to bring forward for discussion?
Lisa, that's where I parked the, that nice presentation, if you wanted to know. That was, I put that in with this construction information.
Leona's presentation?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So maybe, so Leona, I gave Leona the night off. She was at school till almost 8 o'clock last night, working on the audit. So if you have some specific construction update questions, I'll take those and then we'll show you a few pictures of the building and where we are with it. I don't, while you're thinking of your questions, I will see if I can get that presentation on here to share my screen because she did send it to me.
There's that little button up there that says share. You should be able to get in with that.
Yeah, the little bit of problem is that she does it in Google. And she does it in.
I made a PDF. I made a PDF. That's the one that's in Board on Track.
Yeah.
Do you want me to see if I can grab it?
I might have it now. I just now have to. I just want to make sure I'm sharing the appropriate screen. Yeah, if you can bring it up, Sarah, because what's happening for me is I can only bring it up separately. And so when I say share my screen, it's not sharing. Oh, wait a minute. Yeah, I can't share.
Okay, let me see what I can. Oh, I didn't have to do that, did I?
So for those of you here not part of the board, Microsoft Teams is very new to us. We've just switched to that from Zoom, so we're going through some growing pains. So thank you for patience with that.
This will be a first. I'm going to see if I can do this. Okay. Here, this is supposed to be a.
I think I might be able to do it. I have the packet up in a window.
Okay.
That would be good.
We'll give this a shot.
We'll be sad if we can't because this, Leona took some great pictures. The building is really coming along. Yay, I think you can get that.
Yay, thanks, Maura.
Okay. So this is the photo of what will be the front building. And what's outlined kind of in blue there is called the storefront. That's where the glass will be engraved with, you know, the word AMSA. Mr. Naraki's office will probably be that corner office right there so he can watch everybody coming in and coming out and be readily available for people when they enter the building. He's moving to the main building. Come January, when we're finished. We're still on track to finish in January. You can probably scroll down. Most of all of the windows are installed and they are, they're looking great. They're beautiful. And I think she shows that in the next slide as well. Yeah, big, beautiful windows. She really said, when you're inside and you're looking out, they let so much light into the area and it really seems very cheery. Drywall in the second floor is pretty much done. We can see hallways. We can see classrooms now. So it's very, very exciting. And the classroom space is big. It's nice. There's a lot of room. That obviously is a science lab because we have like the gas and water piping already kind of put in there. So it's really, really exciting. It's hard to tell what this one is, but this is our bus loop where, you know, the fence got moved back so that the buses now can run in the bus loop. It's still a little tight. We can't run like buses parallel yet, but they're working on that. And that'll, that'll be coming, you know, rather quickly. This is the pad that our transformer is supposed to be on. So this is the only hiccup at the moment. And where we are with this is, we just sent a change order to Bob. So we've got to incur a cost here. It's small comparatively, but it's going to cost us to move forward, $22,000. We will have to tie into the power of the white building in order to keep this project moving forward. We're supposed to have this transformer over the summer. National Grid has the transformers on backorder. But in addition to them being on backorder, they've outsourced the building of these transformers. And they're, they have found that many of the transformers that are coming into the yard are malfunctioning. They're not working. So now they're putting everything that comes into the yard through some quality assurance testing, which obviously can delay the process. But at least, you know, you get a good transformer instead of taking a transformer, finding out it doesn't work, and then having to go back to the drawing board. So they have one coming in in September. They say it's ours. But it will need to undergo approximately four weeks of that QA testing. So if we don't spend the $22,000, we will significantly delay the building and cause much worse costs because we probably would lose some of our contractors because they've been so tightly lined up. WT Rich has been doing an excellent job, staying on top of everything. So that's where we are with that. Just a quick update on, I think that's the end of the presentation. But we are still waiting for final numbers around the retaining wall. We've been working really closely with Bob Baldwin to, you know, make sure that we get the best price possible to fix that retaining wall. It is a safety issue. It is causing some of the parking lot sinking kind of things around that area. So it is going to be fixed and it's going to be fixed within the contingency money that we have in a loan. And we've also done quite a bit of paving. If you've been on campus, you can see that. That most of that paving again came out of the contingency from that loan. So it's not hitting AMSA's, let's say, reserves or it doesn't really have direct budgetary impact on us. We've put some speed humps in to kind of slow things down. They're not really big on the side of the lower school. We're testing them out. We were going to increase them, but there's some concern that if we increase them too much, it'll slow traffic down too much and campus will get congested. So we paused on that. We're watching and taking some data over the next couple of weeks. Any building questions?
It looks fabulous.
All right, it does. It's really, really exciting to see it.
All right, so no other questions, no other items need to be pulled out of the consent agenda? Excellent. Moving on to votes. The minutes from the July 30th, 2024 meeting, any questions, comments on those? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve minutes on July 30, 2024. Yep.
I'll second that, Greg Theos.
Thank you, Greg. I appreciate the name. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
I'll have to call this.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry. Bella?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
James?
Abstained due to my absence.
What was that?
Abstained due to my absence.
Yes, okay, that was James Carter. Okay, abstain. Maura?
Yes.
And that's everyone. Did I call you, Greg?
I did.
I was going to say, does my seconding count?
No.
I vote yes.
Yes. Sorry. Okay, that's everyone. Motion.
Next up is the executive director report and vote to approve the request to amend the charter maximum enrollment cap.
Okay. So Sarah, I sent you, so Maura, can you bring up my PowerPoint? And we'll, we'll team up together. And as you're getting that ready, I thought before I discussed the expansion application, I would open up the ED report with just some verbal opening week good news. So first and foremost, I'd like to share a letter that Counselor Trey Pucciello, I think I said it right, sent to us. So I was here last year and no one sent us a welcome letter, you know, to start. But he took the time to write a really nice letter to us. Best wishes for the upcoming school year. Dear Executive Director Mobley, I greatly enjoyed attending AMSA's Board of Trustees annual meeting back in June. Having listened to your entry plan and goals, I can say it is certainly an exciting time for the school staff and students. Projects like the construction of the new 17,000 square foot academic building show that AMSA is making critical investments in campus life to optimize student success. With all this long-term planning going on, I wanted to pause to take a moment to express my well wishes for the upcoming academic year. I understand and appreciate how challenging this school year can be for students, faculty, and staff, as well as administration. I look forward to partnering with you to ensure your students, many of whom are Marlboro residents, find great academic, social, and collective success. Again, my most sincere well wishes for the upcoming school year. And don't hesitate to contact me if I can be assistance. He is an AMSA grad, but I wanted you all to hear that because a lot of the great stuff that's going on is because of the support that you give us at AMSA and allow us to do it. So I wanted to share that. Also to share that we had our first kind of family engagement evening activity. 160 families signed up to kind of come through and just walk through the building and stay for the ice cream social. So 598 people came through. So it's really, really exciting. Some lessons learned. I think that those folks that came in at 4 o'clock, I think they might have thought the ice cream was right away, but the ice cream was a little bit later. So in speaking with Mr. Naraki and Ms. Nensy, we think that next year when we do it, we're shortening down the timeframe because they didn't need as long to roam through the building and we really enjoyed the ice cream together. It was a great, great event. We welcomed five new staff members. Alessandro De Mayo, he's a former AMSA grad. He is a long-term substitute for a teacher on maternity leave. James Fortier is our new Associate Dean of Students for the upper school. Carolina Franca, also an alum. She is teaching science. And then Jennifer Greppin for English. Laura Cretman was with us last year as a substitute nurse, and she is a part-time nurse this year on staff. And then Jessica Wilk, an English teacher. So we didn't, we did not have a lot of staff move on, which is a wonderful thing. We're very proud of that. And they also are very thankful to the board for approving the school calendar because I think people are really happy that we have a long weekend. The first week of school is exhausting, whether you are a new teacher or a veteran teacher. It's completely exhausting. So I think that they were happy with that. Okay. So I did preview this with the teachers, this plan, and we did have a couple of questions. I do plan on having some like open lunchtime after we get through the charter renewal for teachers to drop in and ask for the questions. I was trying to go quick because I wanted to respect their time to set up their room, but I think that I probably needed to do a little bit of a deeper dive, kind of explaining things. I'm going to walk through that tonight. But I will also be having open doors days for teachers that are on lunchtimes that week after the renewal. So why? Why are we looking to expand our enrollment? First and foremost, AMSA has a long history of fostering academic success with all students, not just the top performing students. There's a high demand for AMSA. As you know, the number of applications far surpasses the number of seats that we have each year. We really believe in what we do. There's a deep commitment to AMSA's mission by everyone. All of the presentations I went to, everybody mentioned our core values, whether it was sixth grade orientation or it was, you know, a ninth grade class meeting. So everyone really, really appears deeply committed to our mission, which is serving all students. Our demographics largely represent three out of the four of our sending districts, but not necessarily our largest sending district. And opening up a few more seats, we may change those demographics a little bit. The what and the how? We're going to request that we expand to 1,000 students. I know that I had originally put it out there, you know, to go from 966 to 996. But Leona and I met with representatives from the Department of Education, and they really suggested that we ask for 1,000 seats because that gives us the flexibility to like waiver a little bit and still stay within that thousand. So the Department of Ed doesn't like it when you go over your enrollment. They are okay if you're under a few. And you can decide as a school, or we can decide as a school, that it's best this year to go 998, 996, because we anticipate things. Something unusual has happened this year. Linda Edwards, our registrar, is like a magician. I don't know how she does it, but her projections are typically spot on. And she's been a little bit of a wreck because students in grades 10, 11, and 12 did not leave like anticipated this year. Great for AMSA, but if our enrollment right now is a little wonky, we are, we are over what we're supposed to be. In fact, I want to say we are about 977 right now. So things will shake out and, you know, we'll get back down to normal. But we're going to go based on what the Department of Ed recommended. And so that would be 1,000 students. We won't reach the 1,000 until FY '27. And we are definitely going to need to add additional staff to do that. All right, you can flip to the next. And stay here for a little bit. So this is the expansion chart that Linda Edwards prepared for us. As I said, she's really an expert in it. And we may end up adjusting these numbers slightly as a result of no one leaving this year. So we anticipate if this is approved, that we would take 146 in sixth grade. We're thinking, if this is approved, we probably will shrink that down to 142 again because of the number of kids that didn't leave. So she'll do some recalculating, but essentially this shows you that there's not a huge impact in any grade level. So even if we go with this chart, we would be adding only four seats to sixth grade, one seat to seven, and then four seats to eighth grade. So it's not going to really impact us very much at all. The small increases though create a tipping point in some lower school sections, particularly in math and history, which is where those new teachers would come in. We would have to hire a lower school math teacher. And looking at the master schedule, it looks like a lower school history teacher in order to, you know, create that extra section so that we can just, you know, we won't go over the 26 because that's contractual in a section. And this way we would be covered in math and history. We're going to start there. And then the following year, we'll analyze the master schedule again and look for those classes that are close to being at capacity. I think that this is a really, really positive thing for the lower school teachers. Because we've had that kind of attrition come 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, we have some really small classes in the upper school. But they are AMSA's, I guess, signature dishes, as you know, probably Rahul would say, you know, that secret sauce. There's things that kids stay at AMSA for. And we, you know, we wouldn't look to, just because they're under-enrolled, get rid of them because it really does make AMSA AMSA. So by adding the teachers in the lower school and relieving some of that pressure, and then hopefully these kids will be taking those signature dishes when they get up to the upper school. There's plenty of room there for them to do that. We can, does anyone have any questions about the expansion chart before we move on? No? All right. So the next few slides are slides to justify the why. And when we look at where our students are performing in comparison, and I took our biggest sending district, which is Marlboro, and in comparison to the state, we can see how much better AMSA students perform. So in sixth grade, we do have a high percentage of kids not meeting, you know, the standards. That's to be expected because we've only had them for not even a full academic year. But when you look at where we take them by 10th grade, you can see where those percentages are. So by 10th grade, our Ls and our former Ls, there's only 7% of the kids still not meeting that we still have more work to do before they graduate. 5% of our low-income students and high needs incorporates all students that would fit in the category of Ls, low income, or special education. So I think that this is an incredible success story. You see by 10th grade, Marlboro is still looking at numbers that almost exceed where we are in sixth grade. So I think it tells, you know, a strong story. The top chart is ELA. The bottom chart is math. Okay? And this is science, I believe. Yes. So the stories are saying, but I mean, it's actually even better by 10th grade. None of our students are in that not meeting category. You know, and I, and I think it's because of that secret sauce. I think it's because students double, you know, take those 13 classes in eighth grade and, you know, I hear how awful it is and tough and everything, but it really makes a difference in, in where they are. Okay? This is just to give you an idea of the demand. So this year we had 141 seats available and we had 939 applicants. It kind of mirrors that all the way down, 145, 1,056. So there's a big demand for AMSA's education. We're not increasing a lot, but hopefully we can help a few more students. These slides just kind of show you with our, our AMSA versus the, the three sending towns. Hudson is the fourth one, I think is on the next page, but I just compared demographics so that folks could see where we mirror more Maynard, Clinton, and Hudson rather than mirroring Marlboro when it comes to ethnic diversity. And more than likely, a greater percentage of students will come from Marlboro. Currently, they fell into what's called the lowest performing category. So that releases that cap. So we had a cap this year and we could not accept very many students from Marlboro. That cap will go away with or without the expansion next year. Hudson is approaching the cap, the financial cap. And more than likely, students from Hudson next year will have a more difficult chance in the lottery as of right now because they're, they're spending a lot more money on their kids. So they're getting close to cap. Recruitment strategies that we will use if we're approved by the Department of Ed. We're going to partner with community organizations, make sure we get the word out there so that, you know, sometimes AMSA gets accused of targeting, you know, high-flying students and only high-flying students. I can assure you again, Linda Edwards does a great job with recruitment and getting very, very diverse kids, you know, as much as the lottery will allow into AMSA. We're going to participate in and sponsor some community events, some, some fairs, our cultural festival in order to get the word out. We'll make sure things are multilingual when we're campaigning about recruiting students. They are now. We'll use culturally relevant messaging. We're going to do some success stories. I think Marcy Eckel and Mike Finkel are working on AMSA's success stories now and will hold information sessions like we normally do. Okay. So the only other thing that I just, I wanted to share with folks about this. Rightfully so, there was a couple of faculty members that were concerned about, you know, increased costs to AMSA, right? So we did say that we would have to hire, at least in year one, two additional teachers. And they were concerned about materials. And again, rightfully so. If the Department of Ed does approve this, there is not, not only will our per pupil tuition increase, but there is grant money associated for the first couple of years when you do these increases to support you through it. So, you know, I think that AMSA, while we had a tight budget last year, I think AMSA is in a good position to do this. I think the number of students that we're asking for, the amount of materials that we would have to buy, as you saw, there was four, there was three, there was one. It's not that significant that it's going to be a financial burden on AMSA. And so we're not doing it for financial gains. We're really doing it just to expose the secret sauce to a lot more people. But just for numbers, in year one, we would increase tuition revenue by about 320,000. And in year two, adding an additional 16 seats would increase tuition by approximately 284,000. So by doing this, we will be collecting about $500,000 or a little bit more in just tuition without any grants in order to support this and in order to, you know, expand our teaching population. Question? Maybe Greg got some.
I, I think you covered actually most of them. I'm eager to actually take this info back to the teachers because I know I was having a lot of conversations with them after you talked to our all staff. I don't, I, this is not really a question, it's more of a comment. But I, I definitely think this is a, a good thing to do. I think we definitely want to expose AMSA to more kids. And I think the revenue that this would bring in is not insignificant and it would definitely help. You know, you want to find a nice sweet spot where you can run as lean as possible while benefiting as many kids as possible. And I definitely think 1,000 is closer to that sweet spot. Looking at the data that I've seen that you've presented, that I've looked at for my own curiosity. So I'm, I'm excited for this. I'm really excited to see how it goes.
I did not do a good job communicating this to the faculty. I, I own that. I rushed through it. I get, I, I think, I think I get as nervous as a kid on their first day of school when I, when I present to the faculty sometimes. And I, I don't think I, in my rush to give them time and be like, you don't want to be listening to me. I know you don't want to listen to me. I should have had them listen to me and I should have probably run through this like that with them. But so I'm, I'm glad if you can, you know, share this with anybody that's been communicating with you, Greg, and encourage them if they still have questions. Like I said, I'm going to do calendar invites that, you know, say, I'm, these lunches, if you're free and you want to drop in, I'll bake the sweets, you come by and ask the questions and poke me all you want on it. But I really did not do a good job at all communicating this by opening days. Yeah.
It, it's a tricky balance to strike, especially with teachers of like, I want to take up the exact correct amount of your time.
Yeah.
And I speak from experience on that.
Any other questions? Then we need an official vote for you to vote to move it forward to the Department of Ed. Oh, I think you're muted, Maura.
Yep, I am. So we will be looking for a motion to request to amend the charter, a maximum enrollment cap to 1,000 from 966, I believe would be the appropriate language in that motion.
I will make the motion to amend the charter from a cap of students to 1,000.
Yay, from our teacher. Yay!
This is Darren, all second.
Darren? Yep, okay.
Sorry Evan, if I got in front of you.
That is okay.
Okay, I'll call. Bella?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Maura?
Yes.
That's everyone.
Excellent. Next up, Lisa, it's back to you, the employee handbook policy update regarding non-discrimination and harassment.
Yeah, I'm going to do, be quick with this one because I can be long-winded. Our attorney, Michael Joyce, sent us this policy and said it needs to be in the fact of the handbook because it's just been updated. The law has just been updated. And while we have something in the handbook, it doesn't cover the aspects of the new law. So it's been vetted by the attorney. It's in, it's, it's the law.
All right. I will take a motion.
This is Darren. I move approval of the revised non-discrimination and harassment policy as presented.
And this is Evan, and I will approve that motion. Second.
All right. So we have Darren and Evan?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Evan? Great, I will call. Bella?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Greg? Yes.
Yep.
Okay. James?
Yes.
Maura?
Yes.
And that's everyone. Motion passed.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Next up for a vote, we have the AMSA settlement agreement, which everyone has seen and has been signed by all parties and we need to vote to approve. Any questions, comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the settlement. Bella?
Second, Christine.
And Christine, second. Thank you.
Discussion, comments, questions?
Nope, nope.
Okay.
Bella?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
And Maura?
Yes.
That's everyone.
All right. And next we have the AMSA Teachers Memorandum of Agreement for 2024. Questions, comments, discussion? Motion?
I move approval of the AMSA Teachers MOA for 2024 as presented. Darren?
Bella, second. Great. Bella?
Yes.
Christine?
Yes.
Darren?
Yes.
Evan?
Yes.
Greg?
I have to abstain from this, right?
Yes. Oh.
I abstain.
James?
Yes.
And Maura?
Yes.
Okay. That's everyone.
I guess I already got to vote on it once, so. Probably unethical.
Double dipping.
That whole vote early and often actually doesn't. I just want to say a quick thank you to everybody for all of their hard work all around on all of the work that went in to getting us to this point where there is an agreement in place. So it takes a lot and we all appreciate it. So thank you. All right. Moving on, I think instead of calling this line item the capital campaign, we're going to call it like fundraising update from now on because that's more what it is. So Marcy, would you like to give us the news?
Maybe we can line item it, Sarah, development. Development update? Or will that mess? Development committee. Got it, got it. Okay. So this is going to be now named, we're going to, going forward, it's the fundraising update.
Does that work, Marcy?
Yeah, I just sent you. Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, I just sent Maura, you and Sarah with you as a CC, Lisa, just that exact suggestion to call it. So you'll have it in your email inbox, Sarah. I sent that about 20 minutes ago. So.
Great.
Okay. So just a couple of quick updates. The golf tournament was on August 6th. It was a sold-out event. We had over $7,000 in sponsors. I don't have the final numbers now. This usually lands somewhere around 15 to 17,000 dollars-ish and we anticipate it will be similar this year. It's a really, really special event. This was the fifth year, correct? That's right, right? Yeah, fifth year of the golf tournament. So that's great. The first annual run for the Eagles will be happening on September 14th. So I think people might remember that we had scheduled this last spring and then had to postpone it because we didn't really have very many people registered. Well, we actually have 45 people registered right now and it's actually at AMSA this time. So it's a lot simpler for us to pull off. And registrations keep coming in every day. So this is again, a community event. It's probably not going to be a big moneymaker, but it will probably will, if we continue to do it year after year, it probably will, you know, start to ladder up. So that's exciting. The second annual fund run that happened at the lower school, so last year there was a fun run. So that is happening again. It's, will be on October 30th. We've had a little bit of transition with our events team. We had one incredibly valuable hands-on volunteer who had to step away because she's actually taking a larger role with the PTO and then doing some other stuff for her kids. But we're still in good hands. We have a good committee. Mark Vidal, actually, I noticed on the AMSA chat, was soliciting people to try to get a few more participants on that committee, which would be awesome if we could. But if not, we're still going to do fine having these events this fall. The Business Partners Program is up and running. We have our first two members, Abidya Bank and Workers Credit Union. So that's great. I've actually met with the Business Partners Committee today and they have a pretty good pipeline of five or six people that they're in communication with. So we're going to start ramping up that program. We, oh, I recently joined through the, I get the initials wrong, the Massachusetts Public Charter School Association, right? I always think, I'm, like, I'm, I'm an animal person, so I think MSPCA and it's not the same. Anyway, I joined a group that they have, it's called the Megaphone and it's these monthly meetings and it's all development and marketing people from all of the charters across the state. So that's going to be a really good touch point for us to have those relationships. So if we have questions or we want ideas or I see something amazing on somebody else's website, we're going to have really easy access to contact information to connect with those folks, which will, I think, be really helpful. It's topic-based, so I think they ask a different charter school to present each month. So it could be at some point, we'll have an opportunity to present about something, which could be kind of fun for us. And then the last two things are the Stem Sowing Eagles Board will meet this month, at the end of the month. They are, as I think everybody knows, holding the Bourbon Raffle to benefit AMSA. To date, over 50 tickets have been sold about that. Just so everybody knows, we're not publishing it on social media. We know that there's a lot of kids that pay attention to our social media. So we're trying to be careful about that piece of it. But we are helping to promote it to our families, to our parent community. And so there was a message that went out earlier this week and we had a pretty good bump. You know, 15-ish new tickets were sold from that. So that's really exciting. You know, again, I think it's for people that love bourbon, it's awesome. And for people that don't love bourbon, they can keep scrolling. It's not, you know, it's, it doesn't work for everybody, but it's an awesome opportunity for the people that do enjoy it. The prizes are really sensational. And we did have, the, the Stem Sowing Eagles did have a table at the golf tournament sort of to talk to people about that too. And there was some real enthusiasm in the crowd. So people were very, very excited. And then just the last thing, I think I mentioned this the last time I was with you all, but we did end up selling 188 bricks, which is great. And those will be delivered actually on September 6th. So those are, I, I don't want to promise exactly when they're going to be installed, but probably sometime in October, we think, Lisa. Does that, does that sound right? And so that's a really nice representation. And I think Darren, when I did present about this the last time, you suggested that we talk to the alumni group about having a brick. So they did get that in. So, and the PTO did one too. So we have a pretty good representation that way. So I think that that's really nice.
Awesome. Thanks to the alumni and the PTO.
Yeah. Marcy, well, if for new families who are just joining AMSA, will there be another round of opportunity to buy bricks for some of our newer families?
We hadn't talked about that. I, I'm not opposed to that in any way. We'd have to figure out, you know, a project to tie that to. Again, that probably could be something around some anniversary event or some other beautification thing that we have going on. So I think there could be an opportunity for that. I don't, I think once these are installed, I don't know that we'd want to promise to, you know, dig up and do that type of thing. I think that's pretty cost prohibitive, but I think there's certainly some opportunities for other spaces that might need that.
Okay. I've gotten really good at picking up bricks and replacing them. So.
I mean, I don't want to speak for anyone. I, I, you know, maybe if Eric were on this call, he'd say, oh, that's easy to do. I imagine it's not that easy to do because it's sort of the front entryway of the new building, right? But I think that we'll have other opportunities. I mean, certainly anybody that's driven around campus knows that there are tremendous opportunities to beautify our campus. So, so we could, we could start a list now. And speaking of the anniversary, so I think everybody knows the 20th anniversary is 2025, which is right on the horizon for us. I think one of the things that we've talked about, Maura and I have certainly chatted about is tasking the development committee with sort of filtering out some of those ideas for what we might tackle in our 20th year. And then just, you know, launching a year-long opportunity. So it would, it will span two fiscal years, but it will be a year-long opportunity for people to, to participate. We have loosely talked about some sort of gala event. Again, we are not wed to that. We're not opposed to that. We need to sort of think about how that makes money and the time and all of that other stuff. But there's certainly a ton of opportunity for, to celebrate our current families, to celebrate our alumni, to celebrate our faculty, to celebrate our past leadership, all of that other stuff. So we have, you know, we could plant trees, we could sell merchandise, we could revise our logo, like we have all of the- Like we have all of those things written down and we'll start to filter through those.
Awesome. That was pretty much the development committee update as well, so that was good. Um, alright, thank you very much, Marcy. Any questions for Marcy?
Marcy, I'm wondering if you have, um, a one-pager or, or what you're using sort of to solicit businesses that we might have access to? As we, or do we just point people to you sort of as we have our own connections in the community?
Um, I mean, certainly both. We do have a whole section on the website and I can, um, once I'm not talking anymore, I can put it. Uh, I don't know that I know how to use the chat feature on Teams, but it must be similar. I can put it in the chat, um, but I can also give it to Sarah to, to send out in the, you know, minutes for this. Um, and then, so as you're comfortable, certainly, you know, feel free to talk to your own connections, but also feel free to send them my way too. So we have a very, we have a, a great group of, um, women, um, that are very enthusiastically pursuing a lot of those leads for us. So they'd be very excited for new opportunities.
Great. Excellent, excellent. Um, alright, moving on. Sorry, thanks, Marcy. Moving on to the faculty update, Greg?
Yeah, so, um, I am going to definitely echo what, what Lisa said earlier, which is that the first week is an exhausting ordeal despite only really being three days long, um, of kids. But I'm like going to bed after this, so. Um, as far as news from faculty goes, uh, there is, to my surprise, actually not much, which I think is a good sign. This year definitely opened more smoothly than last year did. Uh, last year we had switched to Power School, we had a new system for distributing IEPs and there was definitely some like technological chaos. Uh, and I am pleased to report that that is absent this year. Um, I have not had my meeting, my sort of regular meeting with Lisa yet. Um, so there are definitely a few things that I need to discuss with her that I think are, are like discussions for us instead of like whole board, um, discussions. Uh, one thing I do want to bring up is there is a piece of technology that, um, called Lighthouse, which I'm not sure how many of you guys are available about. Lisa is signed because she's already spoken about this. But I, I do think enough people have talked about it that it's worth bringing to the board's attention. Um, this is a sort of an assistive tool for teachers, uh, developed by one of our own teachers, Brian Bakla. Uh, and in the past, the school had bought it, um, from him, uh, sort of subscribed to it and paid him for it. Uh, and it has turned out that due to Conflict of Interest Law, that is probably no longer possible. But the, the number of teachers that have approached me and said like, I don't care what it takes, please let's get Lighthouse back. I think merits a board comment. Um, I know you guys are not necessarily involved in that. I think we can definitely think about creative solutions to make it work, but that tool was really beloved, um, by the staff. Uh, and I definitely think there's a discussion to be had maybe, uh, in governance or in finance. I, I'm not entirely sure actually. Um, but it, it's something that people are really feeling the absence of.
Can you give, what does the tool do?
So the tool, it's kind of a multi-function tool, but it lets you look up schedules of kids. It lets you view your own schedule in a way that's sort of visually pleasing and makes sense. It lets you look up the schedules of other teachers. It let you figure out if a room was being used or not very quickly. Or if, you know, if you're like, oh, I need to talk to teacher X or teacher Y, you can really quickly see where they are, what they're doing, et cetera. Um, it told you sort of how much time was left in the period, just kind of a general, I don't really want to call it scheduling, but quality of life kind of tool.
Yep.
And when I say a lot of teachers have talked to me about it, I, I'm saying in excess of probably fifteen have approached me out of the blue, which is unheard of in the entire time I've been faculty rep. I don't think anyone has ever talked to me that much.
If I was hedging my bets, I would say a hundred percent of the staff, including the admin, miss this tool, right? But it's, it's. Power School can do the same things, but not in a pretty way to make it easy. Like you, you can, you can get the information from Power School, but you have to go through a lot in order to really kind of make it assimilate. The problem is, is a contract should have never been entered in between AMSA and a teacher because if you work for a municipality, you cannot draw two contracts from that municipality. So it's been a violation for like years. So I don't have any clue how to work around this. I, I feel the staff's pain. I, uh, another staff member created an Excel sheet for people to put their schedules in. And when you do that, you can kind of see where they are, but you can't match teachers. Like if you're making a meeting, I can select Christine and I can select Greg and I can select Maura and I can see where they, where they have free periods that match. So it's not that it's not a very good tool. It's that, you know, again, if we're gonna follow the Conflict of Interest Law, we, we cannot purchase this. We cannot purchase.
Yeah, and for what it's worth, I, I think the staff certainly appreciate the legal issue. I, I definitely don't have people coming and saying like, screw the law. I think most people are in the bargaining phase of grief where they are like, they have, and I'm not a lawyer. I definitely think this would be worth meetings with lawyers. I know there have been those already. But I think the feeling of most staff is there must be some way that we can do this legally. And I don't know if there is, but I, I would, I would certainly think it's worth pursuing.
Can we consider another outside consultant to build a tool that would do the same thing?
So as, as a comp side person, my sense is that the other outside consultants would not want to do something nearly as, what's the phrase I'm looking for? Nearly as catered to our specific situation, right? The nice part about Lighthouse was that it was developed by Brian and it did exactly what people wanted. The, the tools for this exist, they are Power School. Because Power School is looking to cast a wide net and to be able to apply, you know, their, their software to any school district that wants it. So if you wanted something as custom as this, I think it would either come at ludicrous cost or more likely most people would be like, no, what, you're asking me to do this? No.
Greg, was it using Power School data?
It was, it was hooked up in the background to Power School's data.
Yeah.
Which is also security, there were a lot of security issues. I mean, I trust that Brian wrote it in a, you know, a pretty safe manner. He's brilliant, but we, we opened ourselves up to a lot of potential security breaches, um, around student data. Um, you know, if Brian's product did what Power School would do with the Department of Ed end, we probably would buy Brian's product instead of buying Power School, right? Like, eh, 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 not that we could, because again, it all comes back to that Conflict of Interest Law. But if there was a product out there that did what Brian's product does and talked to Desi, like his product doesn't talk to the Department of Ed. So SIMs and EPIMS and all of the mandated, mandated reporting, we can't do that with Lighthouse. So it is a convenience tool. Uh, we, you know, I feel everybody's pain, trust me, it's easier for me to look up a teacher, um, using it. But I don't, I don't know how and no one with a more legal mind that I've spoken to knows how that we could purchase this product from him.
One, one thing I have talked about, and, and again, I'm not a lawyer, is potentially making it a stipended thing, but I, maybe that's not a rabbit hole that we would want to get down in a board meeting. I think Lisa, maybe that's.
Yeah.
We could talk about.
Because I explained why that doesn't work to, to the teachers that asked, yeah.
Okay. Well, that is, that is really the biggest thing I've been hearing. So, uh, other than that, there has not been much, especially since, uh, you know, we've discussed the contract and just ratified it anyway. So that's the biggest thing.
Awesome, any questions for Greg? Alright, thank you. Um, I'm glad that the year's off to a good start and that everyone gets a long weekend. Um, there is no parent report tonight. Dwayne said that he hadn't gotten anything except for the one email that I shared during open comment. Um, so that just eliminated ten minutes from the agenda. Uh, and so Lisa, you're up with your ED.
So, so there's no additional ED report? Because I kind of did it in, uh, earlier so that you could vote on what we needed to vote on, so I'm good.
Perfect. Then we are ahead of schedule. Um, alright, so chair business. Um, we at the last meeting asked for volunteers to serve on the Academic Department Chair Negotiation Committee. And, um, Evan, Christine and Jim have offered to serve as that negotiating committee. Um, so thank you guys very much. Is there any other, I don't think we want more than three people on there, but any questions, concerns, comments, volunteers to assist?
I will be in touch soon. We may try to squeeze some dates in. I don't know about next week, but the week after, we may try to squeeze a couple of dates in, but I'll be in touch soon.
Excellent, so thank you three for volunteering. Um, again, it's wonderful work and we appreciate it. Um, and I'll, I'm gonna speak on behalf of people who have been on the negotiation committees before. I'm not one of them, um, but I'm sure that they would be available to answer any questions you might have or to get any sort of guidance from them as well. Um, and then the second.
Sorry, Maura, to interrupt, who that is that's still here? For someone who's new, right, I don't know who. Who that is?
Bella.
Okay. There you go.
That's it.
Thank you, just in case.
Thank you, Bella.
I am sure that others like Raul and Salmini would be more than happy to answer phone calls as well.
And Roger, I mean, he's still on our finance committee, so they're all great resources.
Thank you.
And Jill, Jill and Roger and Staring Eagles, so. Yeah.
Excellent. Um, the only other thing under chair business is with, um, some of our departures and election of new officers this year, we have some, um, committee chair changes. Um, and so I would like to, um, present Evan as the Development Committee Chair and Christine as the Chair of the Education Committee. Um, I, they have, but Christine is new, but she has jumped right in, which is fantastic, um, and much appreciated. And Evan, um, still relatively new, but has done a lot in his tenure so far here on the board. Did a great job with the surveys, um, and has expressed his desire to stay on education as well. And seeing that through, I think, um, that's the right place for our surveys to live and he's done a great job. And I look forward to having him lead the Development Committee, um, with the new structure and having to put processes in place and things like that. It's gonna be, um, it's gonna be an exciting year and I'm looking forward to it. So, um, thank you guys very much for stepping up in those roles. Any questions, comments? Everybody's very quiet tonight. Um, okay, so we'll move on to committee reports, um, for development. As I said, Marcy kind of gave all of the update the committee has not met. Um, and now it will be under Evan's leadership. Um, and it's gonna be a lot of sort of restructuring and processes and obviously talking about the twentieth anniversary. So, um, we can skip over development. Does anybody have any questions for what development is? Gonna, okay, great, awesome. Um, finance?
This is gonna be short, we did not meet this month, uh, so, uh, we will be meeting in September. Um, so I don't really have anything new to report compared to last board meeting.
Alright, thank you. Questions? Nope. Okay, governance, um, Sheila is not with us tonight. I don't know if there is a governance report. But I'm gonna guess no. I don't think governance.
I think the last meeting was canceled, so we haven't had a meeting in this fiscal year.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and then education, Evan? Anything for board?
Uh, the Education Committee did not meet in the last month prior.
Fabulous.
So nothing, nothing to officially report there as we get our ducks in with new leadership in our committees. We can probably get some more on the schedule.
Awesome, thank you. Okay, review action items. Um, so Sarah, help me with these. If I forget anything, board policies review. Once governance, I think, starts up again, we'll.
Yes, yeah, that'll be, that'll be going forward.
Um, and then board education, we'll work together to get some topics on the agenda for that. Um, so for those of you guys who are new, um, Raul had set up sort of a cadence of board education pieces where we would look at all sorts of governance topics for the board and just sort of charter school education, things with Board on Track that we can really get familiar with and use. Um, and in having a couple of conversations in the past couple of weeks with you folks, um, one thing that has definitely come up as something we want to focus on is onboarding. Um, and more of helping all of us, but especially our new members, really get familiar and comfortable with their role on the board. And our roles on the board, not just the roles themselves, but really what do we do as a board? How can we be more efficient? How can we really be that supportive governing body, right? We're, we're very good, I don't, I think, I think we're pretty good compared to other boards. We're really good at not being a working board, right? We sort of keep our hands out of business that's not ours. Um, but how can we be really effective and support the school and the administration and the teachers um, in a way that is conducive to a board? Um, so that's that piece. We'll schedule more of those now that we have our schedule set. Um, we have done the enrollment amendment. That was our vote tonight, um, and then we confirm committee chairs. So any new action items that we want to put onto the next agenda other than an update from Lisa regarding public comment? Seeing none. Um, Sarah, is there anything we need to add to next month's agenda regarding, um, the upcoming site visits or anything like that?
Um, we will probably have not, um, a report from DEES, but we will have a report that, uh, we can, Lisa will probably have for you, uh, for the board to report out how the day went.
Okay. Great. Alright, um, so it has come time to adjourn into executive session. Um, we will be meeting again for the purpose of, I'm gonna get it right, um, to discuss strategies regarding negotiations with represented personnel. As doing so, an open session would be detrimental to the process. Um, as again, as a reminder, we will not reconvene in open session.